Guys, I'll say. Welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting, Thursday, November 1st, 2012. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and Media from the Milford Daily News. The Town Crier and the Patch are also in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, you can submit the meeting through any medium, just please let me know. Okay? Patrick Holland is not feeling well this evening, so I will be chairing the meeting in his absence. Okay, the first item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have three different sets of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at those? The first set of minutes is for the executive session on September 20th, 2012. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion from Mike, second from Don. All in favor? Opposed?
I need to refuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So, four in favor. Motion passes. The second set of meetings is the regular meeting minutes from October 18th, 2012. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion from Paul, second from Scott, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor? We also have a set of meetings, the executive session meetings from October 18th. Motion to accept. Motion from Don, second from Mike, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor? The second item on our agenda is announcements, correspondence, distributions. Do any members of the committee have anything? Paul?
Just to let everybody know too, tomorrow at the Town Hall at 10 o'clock, a committee or coalition that we have in town called Healthy Futures, whose main focus is to improve the health of the residents of Milford by awareness and education on changing of lifestyle and living a more active life. They'll be having a presentation at the Milford Town Hall tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. where they have an imprint of the little engine that could, that shows that with enough persistence that things can get accomplished. And that's going to be held tomorrow at 10:00. Myself, I'm on the committee, Superintendent Trembley, as well as the director of our nursing staff, Judith Dagnes is also on the committee and very active members as well. Thank you.
Good event. Anyone else? Scott?
I know that just in the past week or so, we've, at the Woodland School, they did the Monster Mash, had an opportunity to attend that, but what a great event. Kids had a great time. I know the teachers, I don't, it was tough to tell who was having more fun, whether it was the kids or the teacher. So, it was good to see all the kids dressed up and the teachers certainly, you know, having a good time as well, so.
Did you go in costume?
I did. I dressed as a school committee member in disguise, so no.
Okay. No worries.
So, you get the best, the most?
Funniest.
Yes, I got funniest, yes. I got, I got least convincing.
Any other members? One just quick thing. On October 19th, I did have the opportunity, along with Mr. Walsh, to attend the, the playground ceremony that the Shining Star did to honor and remember one of our former teachers, Donna Kling. It was a very nice and very touching ceremony where a bench within the playground was dedicated to her. Her family was there. So, a special thanks to Lucy Jenkins and all the staff at Shining Star and, as well as the students that participated. So, it was very nice. Yeah, Bob?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, distribution also this evening is an item that Mr. Quatrochio brought to our attention concerning the training for coaches and coaching requirements. I think you've seen that in the package. Just want to call your attention to what's in there. There's the cover memo. There's some questions about what sort of training is provided to coaches at various levels, whether they're just varsity coaches or volunteer coaches. That's all contained within this distribution. It's all been made public to the media, and that's in the packet for your review as a follow-up. And also had one matter of correspondence that I wanted to share with the committee and to ask their disposition on. This is from, from your association, the Association of School Committees. Looking forward, this is the American School Board Journal, is launching a series of success stories that will feature examples of school boards that are leading their district's effort to change educational outcomes for students. The success stories will be featured monthly in a magazine starting in January and will continue throughout 2013 and beyond. And they're looking to find ways to incorporate other boards doing good work in the journal and to print this in their publications. I thought it'd be a nice idea for me, on behalf of the school committee, to submit something to show our effort toward this, toward this end, to what we're doing for success stories for children. And would welcome the committee's input on some, on some, either some bullet points or some thoughts, if that's of the committee's interest, to do a submission to the American School Board Journal.
Would the Pathways Program be a candidate for that?
I could certainly include that in there. I think that'd be a good example.
Just to give it some thought, I guess, because we were all, you know, behind that and we, you know, were, you know, very supportive of that. And the first couple of reports that were made is showing some progress toward, you know, students that could have the potential of falling through the cracks.
It's a great suggestion.
I do like the idea, love the idea of including the Pathways Program. I would also say another thing that we may want to think about including in that is also all the work that we've done, that's been done with the Shining, with the Shining Star Program and all the programs that have been brought along with that and, you know, really the great work that, you know, that all the administrators and the teachers and then certainly the students have done through that program. I think that, you know, gives some good.
So, almost more of a, the whole continuum, starting with, you know, the Pathways Program, down to milestones and Rainbow Room and, you know, the continuum of special education services for children and providing alternative educational, whoa. Okay, that's a great suggestion. I don't know if any of the members have, you know, thoughts or?
I think one thing you definitely want to touch on, Bob, I don't think you want to sugarcoat anything, is you ought to definitely make reference to, you know, there's seven members, seven totally different personalities, and at the end of the day, how we can all come together for, you know, the betterment of what happens in the Milford Public Schools. I think that's, that's very, that message should get out there.
It's a great point, too. So, I'll draft something for the committee to take a look at, and I'll at least let the American School Board Journal know that we're interested in submitting something. And I'll draft something for the committee to, to review in a follow-up session. There's not a particular deadline on this because again, it'll be running for, for at least a year or so. Looking to launch their first, I believe, in January of 2013.
Is it their first journal?
Is their first journal, actually, yeah.
Okay. So, you don't have any idea of what people have submitted in the past?
I don't, no. It's their first, this is their first venture for them, of submitting sort of school board best practices.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll find out, maybe I can get some submissions from January if we want to send something in February to see the, the nature of what it is, but we're charting some new terrain here.
Yeah.
You know, we may, we may even be able to discuss, you know, the adoption of the new superintendent evaluation and our, our first round experience with that and, you know, possibly what we see moving forward using that new tool.
Yeah.
But I, I think probably between all of us, we could come up with some ideas to get to you, maybe send them to in an email.
Sure, that'd be great, an email. And I'll find out from the American School Board Journal, as well as if they have gaps, if they're trying to do a story, if they want to have, I'll give some possible suggestions of areas where the committee feels as though we've been successful in this regard and see which lead they might want to follow.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll follow up with the committee on that. I wanted to just put that on your radar as a great opportunity for, again, for positive public relations for the Milford Schools as well.
Great. Thank you, Bob.
And nothing else this evening. Thank you.
Any discussion about any of the distributions or? No further discussion? Okay. Next item on our agenda is invitation to speak. Is anyone here to speak to the committee tonight? Seeing no one, we will move on to item four. This is the reappointment of Superintendent Trembley to the Bye County Collaborative Board of Directors. There, there is new Massachusetts legislation that each Bye County Board of Director needs to be reappointed annually by their school committee. So, that is what is before us. Bob, you want to maybe tell us a little bit about what you do on that?
Sure. For members who may not be familiar with the, we are members of the, the Bye County Collaborative, which is a special education collaborative largely. It allows us to provide services at a very affordable rate for students who require services outside of the Milford Schools, for those students that we can't service in the district. There are, obviously, there's a number of kinds of programs we have. We have residential programs, we have day programs. The Byco, By County, programs are most affordable because all the towns that are, that are board members participating all pay into that membership. So, it's exclusive for, for the schools that are member schools. It requires that the superintendent of schools of each of the member districts sit on a board of directors. The new legislation, when they came to look at, you know, collaboratives in particular with some recent spending problems in past years, of which the Byco does not have, but they tightened up the legislation and they wanted to make sure that school committees took a vote, a formal vote at their meeting to appoint their superintendent to represent Byco at the board meetings that meets each month. So, it's really a housekeeping item. They just have to have it on record at the, at the Byco office for their, for their reporting requirements.
Any members have any questions? Christine?
I make a motion.
Motion to accept, second from Paul, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor?
Thank you.
Keep at it. Next item on our agenda is the Brookside Memorial Elementary Schools update. We have Lisa Firth and, I want to say Lisa Bracato, no.
Burns.
Lisa Burns, thank you. If you want to come up and, and give us a... Brain lapse, it happens this late in the day, I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, we, we wanted to have you in and get a little update on the first day of school. I know, you know, some of us made some rounds and met you guys on that first rainy day and I know more.
Got the umbrella.
Yeah. And, and most recently with, with the Niasq visiting team and, you know, we'd love to hear more about that, so.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We start, so at, I'll start with Memorial. At Memorial, we started the school year with 467 students, eight kindergarten classrooms, eight first grade classrooms, and seven second grade classrooms. Our numbers today are just a little bit higher at 471. The, there's often times that students are coming in and going at, at about the same rate. So, so right now, we're currently at 471 in the same amount of classes. We added a seventh, second grade classroom today, this year, at Memorial School. So, that was extreme, as for those of us that were here in the spring, that was extremely helpful for, for Memorial School. Our, our numbers in second grade average at around 23, in some, at 24. So, I think adding that seventh classroom was essential for, for Memorial School. Other than that, the opening went well. We did see several of you all there on the first day in the, on that torrential downpour day. But the buildings look, the building looks great, it's clean. We're having a, making a transition over from night custodians to the cleaning crew and there's, all, there's been some bumps, but we've worked closely with Rob Quinn on, on those bumps and worked closely with the cleaning company. And I feel like the building looks great and continues to look great with, with what we have in place now with our day person as well as the cleaning crew at night, so.
Brookside School had a wonderful opening as well. I'm thrilled to be their new principal there. I had, have to apologize to Mr. Lanzetta for giving a Hello Kitty, their plastic umbrella in the downpour.
I apologize for that. It was entertaining.
Little dog over. Kind of embarrassing.
It came in handy. It was good that you returned it to him.
Hello Kitty. There goes a school committee member with Hello Kitty. Our current enrollment is 558 students. Average class size in kindergarten, first and second grade is anywhere from 21 to 23 students. The opening of the school year was fabulous. The staff were so welcoming. Donna Hennessy and Leslie Pettenari welcomed me into the main office and helped me with my transition and continued to do so. We have a lot of fun there. It's, it's a great team environment to be a part of again, and we have several contests going on with the staff that are bringing up positive attitudes, I guess, for the staff. We had a wonderful Horribles Parade. I, I dressed up like a flight attendant and I put out an email asking any staff members that would like to join, and I had 16 responses. So, I call up my designer, Mo Hutchins, who makes my costumes, and said, can you make 16 stewardess hats for me? And she goes, sure, when do you need them? I said, two weeks. Then three days went by, I said, how about 26? And then she goes, okay. I said, how about 42? And she said, are you kidding me? And I said, uh, 54? It was a great turnout. We had three Tarmac Supervisors, a Sky Cap, and 52 stewardesses all dressed up for the Horribles Parade yesterday. And the teachers caught on to decor, dressed their kids up as in destinations they were going to fly to. So, they went to Disneyland, Hawaii, Mardi Gras, Western World, and it was great. The parents seemed to love it. It was a great, the first two months of the school year had been fabulous, and I couldn't have asked for anything better.
It's come a long way since I was a kid. Well, maybe we'll hold questions and you can tell us a little bit about the Niasq visit, and then we can open it up maybe for some discussion. Sound good?
So, the 18 members of the Niasq visiting team arrived on Sunday, October 21st, and we've had set up accommodations at the Doubletree Hotel in Milford, and they were here from Sunday until Wednesday of that week, visiting all of the schools and visiting with, with all different aspects, all different people from, from our school system at Memorial, Brookside, and Woodland. Thank you to those of you that were able to make it on Sunday and meet with, with the committee. As far as we know, it went, it went really well. It was a very positive experience for, for us and for the staff, you know, and, and they had really wonderful things to say about the students at our schools as well as the staff at our school. They were really impressed with some of the things that we're doing with our PBIS program and really had nice things to say about our community.
So much that the director, she was giving her final spiel, I don't know if they did it at your school, but she was talking about our community and our students and our staff, and she began to cry. I didn't know what to do at that point because, you know, she's addressing the staff. So, they were very passionate about what their mission was to come to Milford, and I think at first the staff were nervous like anything new coming in, but I think once they met them on that first Sunday, the staff that attended took a sigh of relief and were able to pass the word on saying, you know, they're really great people. And the next day they came in, it was, it was comfortable, it was relaxing, it was, it was a great environment to work together, and I think we gave them every, all the information that they were asking for.
It must have been a very busy week, I can imagine. I, you know, I was there on Sunday with Bob and Kathy and some of the other school committee members, and, you know, when you have a, a team of 18, you know, all seem very qualified people there, asking you questions, it was a bit intimidating. So, I give you all, you know, the most respect and credit for, for inviting them in and having the reception and, and really the preparation that led up to, you know, getting them in there to take a good look.
We have to say, I mean, it was the staff at the three schools, you know, Memorial, Brookside, and Woodland. We were able to come in at the, and, you know, be there and pull it, pull it together, but the staff did all of the work preparing, all the, yes, preparing the...
Editing, the, putting together the binder of, and the reports. It was a staff-driven project, which is what Niasq hopes for, so, and they, they really did an outstanding job.
Just to add to that, and thank both of you, and also Craig, I know, at least in your case, you inherited some of that. You had it at Memorial School, working with Lisa when you were there, but now it's your own school, and Craig coming down from Middle School East, having gone through that. So, this has been four years in the making with accreditation. And we talk about charting new, new terrain. We had a wonderful opportunity to, at the reception, the opening day, to share with Vinnie Kieso, put together a nice slideshow highlighting all the, just the, the community of the Milford Schools, which was just, it was great. It gave everybody great perspective on the Niasq visiting team. But what was, this is their, this is Niasq's first effort at putting together an elementary accreditation. So, certainly, schools can be accredited separately, like a single school, but this is, this is, this is groundbreaking because it's an elementary school as a district elementary accreditation effort. Because we, as you know, we've been accredited with our pre-K program and our high school and middle school, Stacy, Stacy Middle School, but not at East and not at the elementary grade. So, the effort goes back some years, probably my first year in the role of going back to saying we should be accredited pre-K 12, because it's bragging rights, one, and two, and more importantly, it allows our teachers to take a good hard look at our, our practices and find out. And there's deficits that were revealed, without question. And you'll see some of those areas, the things that we're trying to address now, particularly around curriculum and instruction. So, it was consistent for us to see that the efforts we're making is what they recognized as areas that we needed to improve in. That was a big takeaway for me. The committee may or may not know that the, as soon as they left, the reception had ended on Sunday, we were on the Patriots game, I guess, because that was happening at the same time. They headed back to the hotel, and there's fire engines and everybody's out of the hotel. And so, we got a tip that there might have been an issue, maybe a fire drill, a fire evacuation. Turns out that in one of the breakout rooms for the Niasq accreditation team, one of the, I guess, the stern, stern fire of the tablecloth, and it was one of the breakout rooms for the accreditation team. So, they started with a fire in their, in their room, you know, effectively. So, they got all the way over there, they didn't hold it against us. But in the end, I did hear that they were, they were, in fact, I had heard they were moved to tears and touched by the kind of community that we have here. So, hopefully, we won't be moved to tears when we see the report, you know?
How long did it take to get through our question?
Did they give you an answer on that? There's, usually it's a couple of months of lag time before you get a draft and you have the opportunity to correct.
Yeah, I think they said, we're probably expecting it in about a month for us, and the three of us will look at it for factual, you know, factual content only, and it's just for administration's eyes at that point. And then, once that's, you know, final, it goes to the commission, the Niasq commission will vote on it in February. So, it's a whole new group. So, they, the group of people that were here, the 18 people, write the report, and then it, it gets sent to the commission where another group of people will actually vote on whether or not we, you know, are accredited, accredited with a progress report or deferred.
Deferred period process, you know, if you were in the professional world, it's just, it's high stakes. So, thank you both for, and Lisa was really largely responsible for coordinating all of the accommodations for, Lisa Burns was, for the accommodations and... Thank goodness.
Although they didn't work out so well for you in the first day, but, you know, you did a great job. Both of you did a great job.
Paul?
Just for clarification, too, from what, from what I understand, that this is a, this isn't a mandatory requirement from the Department of Education for accreditation for elementary schools.
It is not a mandatory.
Right. So, this is sort of, you know, an abundance of credit, you know, to, to administration and also to the principals and staff of these schools who took the initiative to get, because again, accreditation in my book means that's the indicator of an excellent school, of excellence. You know, in, in today, when, in a time when public schools have a lot on them to improve, you know, this is showing people in our town and surrounding towns that were taking that initiative to be an indicator of an excellent school. And like I says, it, it, to me, it would more or less lead some public support, and without the positive public support, public education in a district cannot be successful at all. So, we are taking the right move, and again, you know, abundance of compliments to the, to the both of you really, and also to the administration. Good job. Thank you.
I would just say, you know, certainly echo Paul's conclusions on that. Obviously, we had an opportunity to tour your schools, going back to some of the stuff from the first day of school. You know, clearly, you've done a great job of, you know, not only preparing for, for the summertime and from over the summertime and getting ready for the students, but clearly a great job of engaging your staff and, and, you know, certainly, there's a, there's a buzz in both of your schools. The teachers are very happy to be there. They're excited to be coming to work, and that speaks a lot to the leadership that's in those schools. And it's, 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 it's electric with your kids, which is, at the end of the day, what it's all about. So, certainly, the Niasq, you know, huge kudos for, for the efforts that I know you guys go through, sometimes sleepless nights, I'm sure, but I think it will all be worth at the end, and we'll, we'll learn more on the other end. We'll see what happens in a month.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Congratulations. In my opinion, I think one of the reasons they were brought to tears, if you were fortunate enough to sit with the school committee members in the library, one of the questions they asked was, they asked about finances, and they asked about our relationship with our finance committee. And they were quite taken back by how close we worked together, to the point where they all kind of looked at one another, like they were waiting for this long, drawn-out question. Kathy, you were there, and we basically said to them, they came to all departments in town, asked for 2% over last year and do the best you can. And so, the, the director looked at me and she was like, waiting for me to, and I said, so we got together as a committee and with Kathy and Bob, and we put together a budget and we put it to finance committee and it was accepted. And they just kind of, they all, again, looked like they were waiting for this. And I think that's kind of the start of the whole thing. I think that Sunday, meeting with the teachers, meeting with administration, meeting with us, I think really opened their eyes in the very beginning. And then I think the rest of it was just, like you said, the staff at the schools, and I think you're going to find out it's going to be an outstanding report. I'd be shocked if it wasn't. And I agree with Bob, I think there's some areas, but we, we know that. So, I don't think it's shocking to us, but I think overall, they were, they were really amazed. That's the feeling that I got, you know, being with them that afternoon. Yeah.
Lisa Firth, Lisa Burns, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on our agenda, the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
I have for the committee this evening four warrants for your approval. The first warrant is in the amount of $531,253.17.
Motion from Christine? Second from Scott? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor?
Second warrant is in the amount of $25,616.30.
Motion from Don? Second from Mike? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor?
Third warrant is in the amount of $27,371.51.
Motion from Scott? Second from Paul? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of $165,630.81.
Motion from Mike? Second from Don? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor?
The school committee also has a list of the latest appointments and hires. No vote is required. It is for your information only. I do have a jury duty request and vote is required for Ann Showstedt to attend jury duty.
Motion to accept, Paul? Second from Scott? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor?
I also have a professional development request for cost reimbursement that is in the amount of $31,329.62. This also does require a vote.
Motion from Mike? Second from Don? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous in favor?
And that would be all for this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, next on the agenda is subcommittee updates. Does the policy subcommittee have an update?
In closing your packet, is this for your review and information? Is the coach's information that Mr. Quatrochio asked for? And we have a meeting next week to talk about the field and facility use policy, to get back on board with that.
Did everyone have a chance to review that? Any questions from anyone?
There's a couple of comments, too, and hats off to Donald and Christine, but Donald to come up with that idea, you know, more than ever, you know, the ultimate leader or the ultimate role, role model today is the coach. And the more knowledgeable they are in everything, not only in the sport that they coach, but in all-around leadership, you know, today, more than ever, is, is needed. And once he or she can improve on that, then the student-athlete can also improve through his leadership or her leadership. So, again, I, you know, full, full force with that, you know, in today's day and age, it's needed more than ever. You know, a lot of teachers, a lot of coaches also act as the father figure to a lot of these individuals, or the, or the mom to a lot of these female athletes, you know. You know, so again, you know, if you see what's happening around the world today, good, good leadership in that regards means a heck of a lot. And it also can more or less impress upon the importance and the success of, of an athletic program, which is very important for any school. Good job. Thank you.
And all that was done was just tightening up the language so that it's clear, the expectations of any coach in the system, be they volunteer JV varsity freshmen to their expectations when they sign off on the handbook and their expectations for coaching training that they're required to go through. So the language was tightened up and Jerry Moody helped us do that. So we feel good about it. It doesn't require a vote, but it's important that people know that it's, there's not much, I don't think there's any ambiguity anymore in that language.
It removes, it just provides a lot of clarity so that when the coach signs up, they know exactly what they're walking into, where they stand. And there's, there really isn't, to Christine's point, there's no ambiguity. It removes the gray area. Very, very clear. Certainly the, the security committee that Donnie and Mike both sat on, sat with Christine and I, and the policy subcommittee was great to kind of have the two subcommittees working together through that. So it was nice.
So I personally would just like to thank you guys for, for addressing it and coming up with the new language and jury as well. So I really appreciate it.
It's clear now though. There's, you know, all those questions.
And I should also thank Richie too for reaching out to the MIAA and scheduling that course on December third for the coaches. So thanks to him too.
The addition of the principal and/or the principal to the athletic director, I think, was, yeah, was a good addition to have in there as well. I think that's important, so. So this does not require a vote? Okay. Any other members? Safety and Security Subcommittee, any update?
We haven't met since the last meeting.
Yeah. We're not meeting on Sunday. We're not meeting on Sunday. Seven days.
As long as we can avoid hurricanes.
Okay. Okay. Next item, new business. Do any committee members have any new business?
Just something I just wanted to bring up. I just wanted to, obviously fortunately, it was a reasonably non-event and it seems like everybody made it through pretty safely. I know obviously we were closed from school on Monday and Tuesday. Can you just give us a quick update, kind of, was there any impact from a facilities perspective? Any student issues or everybody from a safety and security, everybody was okay? Any, no teacher impacts or student impacts negatively that you've heard about?
Sure. Not that I'm aware of. We, of course, started following the storm like anybody would have done on, on Sunday and been in touch with, mostly it would be in Tom Olafland, Chief of Police. And he had been meeting that on Sunday afternoon with the, with MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to determine what would, what would be happening, what was the storm, what were the predictions, the kind of weather. And we determined early on, as you know, on Sunday, that it would just, while we thought the kids could get to school fine on Monday morning, there was the concern about, as you saw, that storm picked up and the number of downed limbs and we knew it was the right decision to make. So it was, it was early on Sunday when the announcement went out of like four or five o'clock in the afternoon. It's the earliest I've ever canceled school prior to, see, it's always that fear of, you know, is this the right decision before you send out five thousand phone calls, you know? It's got to be more interesting. I'm glad I had the opportunity to share this story with you because we followed the storm and the short answer is no, everybody seems to be fine. There's no damage to our facility. That's the short answer. We were running on generator power, I believe, up until...
Two days.
Yeah, at the high school.
Two school days, yeah.
At the high school, we were running on generators. So, so thank goodness the generators, we know it's fully functioning because we were provide, we were, and you, it wasn't reduced lighting, there was no, everything was up and running, like it was fully powered. The, the next day, so on the Monday, we could, again, following the storm and talked to Chief Olafland and I said, you know, what's the status in Milford? Because meanwhile, Menden, I'm out of power. So now I'm by myself on the house with my candlelight, talking to Kathy Perry, who in sudden somehow has power. So we, we determined that, at the time, there was probably four, four thousand or so families in Milford without power. About twelve intersections blocked with downed limbs and wires, live wires, and that wasn't going to roll the dice on that one. Not going to have, you see in the news last night, kids trick or treating and walking around live wires. I mean, I just, I can't fathom that and I wasn't going to put our kids in that, in that, in that way. And I was waiting for the barrage of angry parent phone calls and I'm happy to report there was not one. At least they didn't get to my machine, so, I don't know, maybe there's a glitch in the system. Kathy did help me to launch the alert on, to everybody on Monday. I could not access my computer and that's the thing with the Alert Now system, they can launch it for you from their office and Kathy was able to do that. So we, that's the first time that I've launched an emergency alert. And that would go, it should have gone to cell phones and any primary numbers, texts, it goes, it pushes out in every way possible. So it seemed to go fine and we came back to school, you know, ready to work again. Buildings, I had the custodians, I had the day custodians come in just to make sure that they were, the buildings, there was no flooding. And it worked with Rob Quinn on that. There's a lot of behind the scenes things that happen on those kinds of days, especially not days off for a lot of our employees. But I think it's handled very well and I'm very pleased with how the staff responded to it and, and happy to report there's no injuries or no, that I'm aware of. And hopefully everyone's power is back on in Milford now and, and everyone's doing well.
The best news is that there's no, certainly no safety issues. I know that there were, I'd gotten a couple of phone calls from parents, I think, that were in houses that never lost power. I think my lights flashed once, I live right across the street, so. I'd gotten a couple of phone calls from parents of, oh, they certainly understood Monday, there were some questions on Tuesday, so I think it's great that able to add some clarification to this and there's, yeah, there, we had four thousand families without, without power, so it's good to kind of add that clarification. Again, best news is everybody was safe, everybody made it through, no facilities issues, so good. And, and kudos to you on clear communication, very, very upfront. I think I got like nine different communications about the thing on Tuesday from emails and texts and phones, so it was great.
You wouldn't have been the one that we get barraged.
Yeah. And it was, but very clear, which was good.
I couldn't pull that one off in Spanish, I tried.
No, but you know, through all the snowstorms we've had, the highway department and the police department, fire department, you work so closely with them that when people have questions, I'm like, you don't understand, he's not making it in a bubble. And for our highway department police to call it off, it has to be extraordinary conditions. Because we, our kids are going to school all the time. Every town around us is closed except Milford a lot of times. So, you know, my point to parents is that if it was closed, then there were some conditions that they were extremely concerned about. I, I didn't think twice about it, especially with, you know, the crew we have around town that cleans things up. I mean, it really is true.
I don't make that in isolation. It's, it's a lot of information from a lot of people that I trust in town to give me that information because I'm relying on it, you know, four miles away and I don't, I'm not seeing it, I'm not living it, I'm trusting, you know, and they're great people to trust.
Right. And they do an outstanding job. I mean, the highway, they do an outstanding job. So if they couldn't get it ready for our kids, then...
And huge kudos to Christine's point, to our highway department and first responders and everything else. I mean, in the power company, I mean, even though my parents had a house, had a tree come down their next door neighbor's power line, took out the line and everything else, they were without power for two hours. Everything right back up again. I'd never seen anything move that fast in my entire life, so, you know.
I think anybody that heard Fire Chief Toohey's interview on WMRC, it was on for two days and he talked about, like what you were saying Scott, you can have power in your house, walk outside and you see what you know is your cable line. And so, oh, it's only a cable line or, you know, you might see your phone line. Your first reaction is to go over and pick it up. Well, two streets down, it could be crossed over a power line and it's actually energized. And his point was, you know, don't pick up anything, you know, that, that you, you know, you don't know. And just imagine if the kids were going to school, coming across the intersection and there was something like that happened, so.
Not working.
That was a great decision. It was. Yeah, you know, because even I didn't, I never thought of that. You know, you come out of the house and the cable line's laying on the lawn, you know.
Nothing like a snow day. Nothing like a day off though, when it's unexpected.
And you didn't have to...
It's fabulous. It's fabulous. You know? You can feed it. Lots of smiles. What a weekend, Halloween in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
Working with the other departments in town, great job. Thank you Kathy.
Kathy was a good, was a good helper. She's like, I never did this before. How did, I walk Kathy through like tech support.
I, I got the cell phone, followed by the home phone, followed by the email, so I got them all as well.
That's good. Means all your phones are on record and they're in good standing.
Yep.
If you got all the messages. Mr. Chairman, I have one item of new business on the budget. I provided, I meant to put this as a distribution. Kathy was able to distribute this at the head of the meeting. You should have a, kind of a working timeline each year. We go through this, it's a similar format. We kind of plug in some dates just so you can see where we're beginning this process. Kathy, I'll be meeting with principals next week and we'll lay out for them the procedures. Started to get our retirement forms from staff, that information will be collected and then we'll begin the budget defense meetings and we'll keep the committee course in the loop on all those fine line details as we go. And if there's any questions or action items you'd like me to take on this, I wanted to provide it for you for feedback.
Just one quick question because it's the first time that I'll have the opportunity to kind of go through. At what point do we get, as my wife affectionately calls it, the Bible? At the, you know, forty million dollars one night at a time? At what point do we kind of get our first plan set, kind of what that's going to look like so we can start to dig through?
We provide that before we get our principal submissions first, right? We give you all the...
Well, we go through all the principals' defense meetings and go through full discussion and then bring it to school committee so that we have a final document and maybe critique something that they've missed or that they've mispriced. So we go through all of that before it gets to school committee. One other point, just from Bob's timeline, we started a few items for FY14 in terms of the school committee's budget items, wish list. Don put together the full stipend and athletic list. So that would be something for FY14, good discussion there. And as well as Christine, we have that documentation for the late buses. That's all built and ready and waiting. Does anything else the school committee might like to have going into our, our first budget meeting? Send me an email so I could build some numbers for you, any ideas, thoughts? We can have that for you.
Oh, sorry Kathy.
No, that's okay.
You'll see the actual submissions from the principals. We're not going to, we're not going to send them out back for revisions before, you know, you'll have a chance to see what they actually submit. The benefit of us sitting with them, and this, Kathy, I talked about giving them the actuals on FY12, we want to look at this year, not only just the wish list things, but how did they actually spend down their lines? How did they close out fiscal 12 compared to what they requested in 13 and what they want in 14? So we can see patterns and how accounts have been moved over the years. We haven't added that, that, gone back that other year in the past from our end of the vetting of this. So we'll begin that vetting process really just to kind of make sure everything's in check. And at the table, we include for those meetings, I think I had lists here, but the principals will come in and they'll meet with, you know, Rob Quinn will be there, Ellen Bojri will be there and Kathy and I, of course, Meg Belcito and Jen Lancaster, English Language Learner Program Director. So all the right people are at the table at the same time to make sense of the budget, to make sure that it's realistic and that it's prioritized based on what the real needs of, of the school are. And then we'll put that together and that's, and that's the new, the new bible that you'll get from there. And then we'll begin the school committee discussions. So after, after, basically the new year usually starts the, the new, the work for the school committee to begin.
Special budget meetings.
Special budget meetings. Kathy's asked to have Friday night meetings. I don't know if you want to do that.
I don't think they do that.
Okay. Okay, any other new business? No. Okay, next item, old business. We have the capital improvement plan on here.
Yes, this is an item we had on a prior meeting. Patrick Collins had asked that I include this as an, as an agenda item on here, it should be under old business to see if there was thoughts or feedback, if you had a chance to look at this now. Again, we can, the, I think that the spirit of this is that it keeps coming back to the committee for, for review, for, for critique, for adding items to it. I recall there being a conversation about Christine, about making sure we don't lose sight of down the road of things that we want, we, even though the new elementary school is a priority, we don't want to lose sight if there are other items that ought to be there. And I want to make sure I'm clear on what we ought to be looking at. I did speak to Rob Quinn about forecasting out five, 10 years, roof projects or boilers are things that have to be mapped here.
And I feel like those aren't captured. I was actually, I don't like how it's presented because I think that in your opening introduction, it captures what we wanted to make sure that, yes, we agree that, you know, that school is our big priority, but we are not giving up our right to come back to finance committee in the next five, six years and say, we have a capital item. And that's in your intro, but if I'm, I'm going to open it up and look and all I see is a school. And I, I, I think we have to figure out how to capture the fact that there, we, we don't want to surprise anybody and we, we need to be prepared. There has to be other capital items on our list. And I feel like what's on the back is really a maintenance list and I find that those are two separate identities. And, and those maintenance, we do due diligence and we don't defer our maintenance, but that's through a lot of hard work and a lot of patience. So it's, it's evolved very differently than what it was before. So I, I feel like just having the school year, of course, that is a big capital item. There is no doubt in my mind or I don't think anybody's mind, but I think that there's a lot of blank space under there. So I think that the qualifier you put in the introduction can somehow be captured under, when I look at that, all I just see is, oh, all they need is the schools, all they're going to need is school in the next five or six years. It's not true. We have a huge district to take care of. So I, I just think it needs some evolution.
Okay, I'll, I'll give Robert a look to see, you know, what other kinds of projects that he, he, because the way he's laid it out is in terms of phasing of these things that he can accomplish them locally, but there's got to be other big ticket items that...
Yeah, and the phasing's great, but I think when you look at this, the, the phasing costs money that we don't plan for. We just kind of say, oh, we have a little bit left here and a little bit left there. Let's do it very, very slowly. But, you know, I think what it looks like is just, there's, there's an amazing maintenance list that we accomplish every year and that we have accomplished, but this is capital items. These are big ticket items that, you know, we, we can't put in our budget. We, we can't plan for it. And I don't see those captured on that front page. And I think, yeah, I just, I think it looks like a maintenance list that's outstanding and then this big capital item.
Even if we could break it out into...
And I think even just be as transparent as capital items and break it out that way and, and then even putting into, you know, here are the items that we categorize it as, able to be covered through school committee budget or school committees working towards and covering in their budget and then a different group that's capital items needed and have been prioritized.
Yeah, like we anticipate, like the school's always on there, like for years and years and years. I mean, we never, but it was on there. So we anticipate in the future that we have that. You know, I, I think it's just really hard. I think it's, the intent of putting all this maintenance information there is terrific because so much, we have done our job. We have, we have not gone back to them over and over again for things that cost a lot of money. And, and Rob has done his job and been incredibly creative in finding ways to get things done. But I think that has to be reflected better in a capital plan that if I'm on that committee and I pick it up, I'm not going to have time to read your well put introduction. I want to look at and say, what's the school going to ask us for? If I'm in the public and I want to go and see, I'm going to be like, what's the school? Oh, all they need is a new school. Absolutely. That's what we're looking for, but there, these buildings, there's other capital items we have to look towards, a new heating system, the security, that's a capital item. You know, I mean, we're, we're doing our best to get it in sooner, but we can't say in the next six years, we're never going to, what if, what if we have to?
And we have had it, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely, and that's not reflected here.
But, but, do you, do we have that still?
Yeah, well, we did, last week, we took the list, and Rob basically parceled it out as to what would be done in these phases, and where we are, you know, at the time, like, for example, surveillance technology is like a million dollars at the time. Three years, four years later, we started to buy cameras, and we've been continuing to do that this year, so that's now pared way back. But there are things, the point I'm hearing here, like, for example, you know, we have, you know, playground innovations to the school, which can be, which could be, could reach a capital level, if it's, depending on how extensive it is. But like auditorium seating, or things like, you know, how much of that can be taken out of the revolving for use of the auditorium, so I'll have to sit with Rob and Kathy.
Do you know what I mean? I think that, in the past, we had it, one, in the past couple of years, the way it was reflected, school by school, it was terrific to see, so even though Rob was able to do things like the auditorium, that's a really nice, as a, if I were on the capital committee, I think, I think that, okay, now I see it by building, school's our number-one absolute proper priority, but by building by building, okay, I get these bigger items that, kudos to the school for finding ways to pay for it, little by little, and we're trying very hard, but I, I think that I don't want to get caught four or five years from now and be like, hey, listen, we did have that.
Perhaps reverting back to the earlier draft that I did of that, but also then including, as, you know, supporting material, the maintenance work.
Absolutely, there's gotta be a balance, I don't see it here.
Something in between what we, okay.
Scott? You brought up a good, you brought up one point, is the, you know, the capital improvements committee that we have, and working with the finance committee, about, because I think we've got a lot of different, we've got a lot of good ideas of how we can do it, why don't we just go ask them? Hey, how do you want us to, how do you want to see this broken out? Because here's what we've got, we've got some capital pieces that we're probably gonna need to come to you with, and we've got some things that we're doing on our own. How do you want to see this presented, so that it's very clear to your committee, so that way you guys have a real understanding of what we're really gonna be coming to you for, in addition to the school, which we have full understanding is a very large ticket item? And even just asking them how they want to see it, and we'll, that kind of makes, that'll make it nice and easy, and they know what they're, what they're expect.
Chair, I think the way to do that would be like, as Scotty would say, something that they could see, like, they usually ask for a five-year plan, and rate them as, in areas of importance. So if we have 10 items that we feel as though should get done in the next five years, that could probably be considered a wish list, but now let's rate the, now let's rate them, you know, 1 through 10 of areas of importance, and what we actually need at the time, so maybe that should be done, too, you know, by Rob and by administration, and then be reviewed by the school committee, and maybe add our input, and then present it to them.
Yeah, that's a great point, because typically, we meet with them once this is finalized, and we present it to them, is that what we did last year?
It's not quite that formal, this, this board looks at it here, and then typically I'll meet with them, with Kathy, with Rob, and it'll meet with Greg Johnson, Greg Johnson, yeah, Greg Johnson, and the CIC, and then the FINCOM will look at that, and usually for the town meeting, you know, in the fall, they'll review that list. But it's a good point, to see, you know, what's the format they'd like to see it in, because it seems like every year I'm having to explain that to Greg, you know, here's our plan, it's still the same plan. So let me, let me work on modifying it, to reflect what it looked like earlier with the prioritizations, see what we need to add that's new, and then see what kind of format they'd like to see at the CIC, see if I can't make it all work.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's how they've been able to plan for the school, is because we've had a list, and that's always been a top priority, so they've been very forward-thinking and making sure the town was prepared for that kind of expense. So, you know, as the budget person.
I also just want to add that the meeting that Bob is referencing is at the point where they have our priorities in front of them, and that's where they're posing the question to us, do any of these need to be an article? And at that point, they either become real, or they're on our list. So we do have that dialogue with the CIC and the FINCOM, and we, you know, either keep it on the list or ask for it to move to an article, and we have not done that, and I don't know what five or six years...
Because we've been planning for the school, but the, as presented, there's no, you don't have a discussion point, it's the school, which is what we want, but, you know, I think it's important that we don't get stuck.
Point, it's a good plan for us to be able to look at and see, and know that we have that.
I would agree.
Generators, you know, those kind of things.
Yeah, I'll put a draft together for the next meeting, so we can see another model, another iteration, and we'll see how it looks.
Sure.
Any other old business? No. Oh, yeah.
I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, Bob, we had asked you for an update, or to look into retaining the possibility of having the SATs housed here in Milford. Do you have any update on that?
High school administration and our guidance, our guidance, our interim guidance director, Kathleen Hebden, and did express the committee's interest and my interest in maintaining that, and again, it was, it was as I, as I relayed last meeting, was, because of the absence of a guidance director, like, a full-time, one-guy person, you know, one person to oversee that operation, wanted to make sure we did it correctly. There is interest, and I did express that, to go forward, and we will reclaim some of those dates back, and continue to offer SATs at Milford High School as a site, so. The high school administration was working on that, we're, how did we handle, did we do that, working with, trying to think back on how we handled that, a few weeks back?
The college board, I believe, gives a stipend, for lack of a better term, to each one of the proctors and to site manager, because, you know, essentially, we're doing the work for them, so that we become a site, but, and we have the benefit of the SATs being here, but really, our staff is working for the college board.
Right. So we're on our way to bring it back, and reinstating that, to the extent that we're able to, we had a little bit of gap here in the wintertime, but we'll, for the springtime, is back on plan.
Just keep us up to date on that from time to time?
Yeah, sure.
So in other words, you expect to administer in Milford in the spring?
Yeah, there are administrations, that, I don't know the frequency by which they